Berkeley County Council. I do not know how that got started, but I am not going to do that. I am going, am serving in the House of Delegates and intend to be a candidate for reelection in 2020. In fact, on that regard, I passed out a flyer to you. I'm having a town hall pre-legislative meeting in Falling Waters this Saturday from two to five, two to four P. M. at Rocky's Pizza in Falling Waters. Delegate Bibby is going to be joining me for that. But the main issue that I want to speak with you today is during the summer interims, the judicial committees of the House of Delegates and the Senate, State Senate, have been meeting. And one of the things we've been talking about, and it's going to be coming up during the legislative session, and it's an interest, item of interest, I think, which will be of interest to you, and it has to do with criminal justice. And I'm very much interested in it because I spent seventeen years as criminal justice case management. There's not going to be much wiggle room in the state budget this year. In fact, there's going to be some anxiety about whether or not we have to cut the budget. So money's going to be tight. But one of the things that we are going to be seriously looking at is legislation to ease the expense on the criminal justice system. And one of the, there's a couple of things that are coming up, one of which, two of which I'll mention specifically. Currently, West Virginia has what we call good time laws if you're inmates. If you're on good behavior, you get X number of days off your sentence. Other states have that in addition to industrial or programming time off, where they get additional time off for going to school or doing a certain program for rehabilitation programs. We're seriously looking at implementing that in West Virginia for more incentive for early release for inmates. And of course, if there's early release for inmates, that will reduce incarceration costs for the taxpayers, including our regional jails. The other thing that we're looking at is pre-trout. One of the concerns we have is that someone indicted on a crime and waiting for, waiting for trial, they're sitting in the jail. Sixty-nine, I can't have one because I'm an alcoholic. So I'm very familiar with the, with the issue of alcoholism and drinking. I was upset yesterday to learn that there's some people in the legislature that want to go the other way with this, including implementing the death penalty for drug offenders, which I think is just, I can't wrap my head around. I just can't wrap my head around.
I think that, I think that a lot of the things you spoke about today are good short-term resolutions to addressing concerns that all the counties have. But I think, I think a little broader look, maybe a more of a visionary for long-term would be to step up the game immensely in our regional jails to, to start some type of rehabilitation of these people that are in there and, and do a better job with that because not only, not only do we have a lot of problems with drugs getting into the facilities, we're not taking care of the people so that they, they don't have the addiction that they had when they got in there.
My, my experience as a criminal case justice manager has been that sadly, when somebody goes into prison, they're worse when they go out than when they go in. Because they become street smart in the wrong ways. Absolutely right. Unfortunately, the pressure that came to the judiciary committees was the realization that if we don't do something about the burgeoning inmate population, we're going to have to start building some new prisons. And they looked at the expense of that and said, well, we got to do something. But whatever the motivation, the worst way to take care of people that have problems is to incarcerate them. Rehabilitation, I remember years and years ago, somebody said to me, what's your view of criminal justice? Should it be to punish people or to rehabilitate them as far as imprisoning people? And I says, well, number one, I said, I don't think people should be incarcerated unless they're a public safety. Let's start with that. If they're not a danger to public safety, why are we giving them essentially lockup welfare? It's an expense to the taxpayers, and it just destroys an individual's, individuals' chance to go forward. I remember when I worked at the state prison system in Maryland, we'd have guys who were in prison for thirty or forty years. When they were released, they said, okay, you hit the street, here's forty bucks, see. The recidivism rate was awful. Good news is, the recidivism rate in West Virginia is one of the best in the country, which is, which is amazing. It's the, the lack of recidivism. So that's, that's good news. Unfortunately, West Virginia, the United States has more per capita incarceration than any other country, to the best of my knowledge. And West Virginia's rate of incarceration is pretty high.
Thank you, Mr. Council. Anyone else? Motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, would we approve the agenda for December the fifth, two thousand?
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order?
Davis, sir. Tracy, I see that the very first one there, there's some invoices that was actually invoices from the previous fiscal year.
You can come here.
Come up to the podium there, Miss, Miss McCrory. But no, there's, there's, there's some invoices from the Sheriff's Department on the seven hundred account that was dated last fiscal year in June.
Yeah, the earliest, we received eight early last week. And Tracy got them via email and brought it to my attention right away. They were incurred last fiscal year. The oldest one, the oldest invoice is dated more nineteen, so.
Okay, all right, and?
They are, they are incurred.
As far as I know of, if this money was, I mean, that's why we encumber invoices, right? And, and if this money should have been coming out of last year's budget, I look at this as someone that is able to, if we're, if we're not, if we're not, if they're not, the invoices aren't being submitted for six months, that's one way to blow your budget, put it on the next elected official.
That's right. It is. And the, and the rules guard against that.
All right, so in my opinion, the sheriff, I'm, I'm going to ask the council to, my opinion on this, and there's a sheriff to pay it out of his gun fund from, since it was last year's invoice.
Thing that's interesting is, don't, don't, don't they keep track of all, everything they purchase? So that at the, before the end of the year, they can, they can come forward and say, you know, we got this stuff pending that hasn't, the bills haven't came in or whatever, but they're encumbering funds. I mean, isn't that what they're supposed to do? Is that?
Yes, and if we go through that every May, as you know, we go through, so we have a program in place to do that.
Alan actually sends-
I'm aware of the process that we go through.
Sends a loadout to every constitutional officer in every department, saying if you have things that you need to encumber, get it done by this day. And that's so that we can compile with the law.
So this supplier, we've had invoices for this year, right? So there, so therefore, you're telling me that there's other invoices out there for the last six months, probably?
Well, Mr. Bennett, you want to prepare a letter to the sheriff?
Be happy to.
Okay, all right, so everybody agree to pull that?
One other matter for the council's attention, and it's not on your purchase order log. Every other year, the Berkeley County, or the Marchburg Berkeley County Chamber of Commerce, as you know, I'm sorry, do a new motion to do that from the-
Yeah, but, and I, I just want to make another statement to Mr. Bentley. I think part of your letter, not that I'm trying to tell you how to write letters, but need to make a statement in there that this is something that is very unacceptable, especially going into election year, when it could be rolled over to another administration. Now, if I'm going to guess, I'm going to say that could be up to the individual personally.
Well, the rule is, all elective officials have to submit their invoices in a timely way because in this rule, this law enacted originally aimed at sheriffs, make sure that sheriff did not spend more than one-half his budget in his last year.
Right.
For the last year before the election, as to protect a new administration coming in potentially.
And I know the law also states that the county council spends more than three percent of the, of their budget, and they're personally responsible for it.
That's right. If you do more than a casual budget deficit, it makes the five of you possible. That, that isn't aimed at the other constitutional officers.
But understand, there's a way for us to stay within our budget. We just postponed the bills. So there's, there's a safeguard for us not to be able to do that as well.
That's right.
All right. Counsel, Vice President Dalian is correct. We needed a, a motion to pull that from the purchase order log.
Motion to the sheriff's question, previous years.
The Galls LLC.
Yes.
For thousand one hundred and eighty-four.
Actually, the total was three thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Yes.
Motion been made, uh, seconded. Seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Any other concerns on the purchase order? All right, interim.
I do have one other, do have one other, just to bring something to the council's attention. As you're aware, every other year, the Marchburg Berkeley County Chamber of Commerce does their, does a, an image book, which is a full-color magazine-style book that kind of highlights businesses and governments and things like that in the county. Every year, every other year, the county, Berkeley County has participated in the image book. Twenty twenty will be the next publication for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. The cost of a full page in the image book is the same as has been for previous years, is, is two thousand dollars. I've met with Tina and talked to Tina and indicated to her that I felt the council would want to continue to support that, there's any, any problems with that.
Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
All right, all right. Moving on to your budget revision, Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir. The council has one internal budget revision for your consideration. The request actually comes from the Honorable Sheriff Curtis Keller, Department seven hundred, which is the sheriff's law enforcement budget. Sheriff Keller's requesting that he be allowed to reduce line three forty-five uniforms by five thousand dollars. Current unencumbered fund balance is fifty-five thousand and dollars and seventy-nine cents, with eight point three three percent spent to date, and increase line two twenty-six insurance and bonds by five thousand dollars. That line item currently has a zero balance. Transfer funds is needed to cover a police professional liability claim deductible.
Okay, all right. And then, while we're talking about insurance, I noticed there's another inclusion that can satisfy possibly totaled over there?
Yes, sir. One of the new, actually one of the new Durango.
Oh, no, there's another one over there.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's one of the four, our assistance.
Right.
Comment to Mr. Blake, transition loss.
Yes, ma'am. It's an ongoing claim.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure.
Um, yeah, it's not a vehicle.
It's a police, it's a police professional liability claim, that's all.
That's four vehicles.
Just want to make sure we're trying to keep everything right here.
Yes, ma'am.
That's four vehicles. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Change in status, we have a new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Curtis Keller for Julie Bush as a tax deputy with a salary of twenty-six thousand seven seventy-one effective December sixteenth, two thousand. New hire recommendation, recommendation received from the Honorable Virginia Science Circuit Clerk for Myra Myers as a deputy clerk with an annual salary of twenty-five thousand five fifty-four effective December fifteenth, eighteen. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Bartlet McHale as a case manager with an annual salary of thirty-eight thousand one fifty-two effective December eighth, two thousand nineteen. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Dennis Morgan as a case manager with an annual salary of forty-two thousand dollars effective January sixth, two thousand twenty. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Ronald Gaither as a home confinement officer with annual salary of thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars effective December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Curtis Keller for Julie Sticker as a sheriff's deputy with an annual salary of thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars effective December sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Change in status received from Tim Zia, Director of Community Corrections for Crystal Peterson. He will be going from part-time recovery resource center, peer recovery coach with a hourly rate of fourteen dollars and forty cents to a full-time daily report center, a recovery coach with an annual salary of twenty September, two thousand nineteen. Change in status received from Mike Line, Chief Marshal Paul Coca-Cola. He will be going from the Deputy Marshal One with an annual salary of twenty-nine thousand three seventy-five to the Deputy Marshal Two with an annual salary of thirty-six five effective December first. Letter of resignation received from the Sheriff's Tax Office for Casey Miller effective December eleventh, two thousand nineteen. Questions on change in status? We have approval minutes for November fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. And, President, any questions or thoughts? If not, moving on to the county council calendar. It will be next Thursday, nine-thirty A. M. have Councilperson Locke, one W. E. P. M. tomorrow morning at nine A. M. Monday, on the ninth, we have two-thirty L. E. P. C., five P. M. Water District, six P. M. Fire Man Protection. Wednesday, the eleventh, nine-thirty A. M. Development Authority, six P. M. Groundhouse Authority. Thursday, the twelfth, six-thirty P. M. The Fire Board.
Water Board.
Okay. Just going to have a party, since Mr. Barnesout's out of town. We have bond reduction for Brattle Creek Phase One, file number zero seven six dash zero four, Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Bond release for Arcadia Communities LLC, Yorkshire Glen, Phase One, Section One, grading bond release, Engineering Department has made that recommendation. Bond release for Arcadia Communities LLC, Yorkshire Glen, Phase Two, Section One, grading bond release, Engineering Department has made the recommendation. And the bond reduction for Panhandle Builders Stone Craft Phase Lots One twenty-six through One thirty-seven, Lots One sixty-one through One seventy-two, Lots One ninety-one through One ninety-eight, and the open space, Lot number zero two two dash one five, and Engineering has, Department has made that recommendation. I see Mr. Stan Brady is in the audience. So anybody have any questions for Dirk?
No questions, just assuming, check all the stormwater, all that's taken care of.
That's a pretty good incentive.
Yes. Thank you.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some move?
Second.
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Hess, good morning, sir. Have some exoneration?
Good morning, everybody. Yes, I do have a couple this week. We had two real estate corrections we had to make, and they were office air. We had three for personal property. And the first two we have for real estate, one for Stephen Hoover, eighty-eight dollars sixty-seven cents, one for Robert Barat, seven dollars and ten cents. Those two, total up is ninety-five dollars and seventy-seven cents.
All right, need a motion on two real estate tax exoneration due to officer.
Can I make a, I'll make a motion to accept the-
Motion been made, seconded.
Can I make a comment?
Any discussion?
Discussion. The property doesn't exist. That was something that, are we consolidating? What do we-
No, it, it, it got put on the tax records, and it shouldn't have been put on the tax records. And it got sold for taxes. And then Barat, Mr. Barat bought it, and he researched it. He said, this should have been moved into another partial back a couple of years ago. So we just got, we had-
So now, so now this clears everything up.
It's, it's gone.
Thank you.
It's off the record.
So you bought it here.
Well, yeah, they bought it, tax sale, you know, and-
I understand how it happens.
But it's, you know, they have them now and again like that. But we've got a couple where you need to get an attorney to do some research on, because we're just hanging out there. And if there's a deed, we have to, we have, it's recorded at the courthouse.
Right.
But, so it's cleaned up, so.
That's why I was, I was trying to make sure that it's finally gone. Thank you.
Yep, that one's gone.
All in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. You have three personal tax exoneration due to officer?
I do, I do, yes. Yeah, I have one for Jeff Largo for twenty-eight dollars seventy-two cents. I have one for Donald Reynolds for seventy-nine dollars and fifty-six cents, and one for Patrick Fleming. It was a leased vehicle and should have been, should have been, should have been put on his assessment, but for six hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven. Those three comes up to seven thirty-one at eleven.
You know, a motion on the three personal tax exoneration officer.
Come on.
Second.
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion?
Well, you know, I, I remember years ago when they talked about keying cars, they were, it meant something totally different than what he's, he's got listening to.
Yeah. All in favor say aye.
Uh-huh.
What opposed?
Good, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Important media reports, Mrs. Mulk.
Well, being the end of Thanksgiving, things are ramping up now that it's in December, but slowing down there. We had the bridge report, and even after all of the border issues and stuff, right now, at this date and time, amount of time spent on the project is eighty-four percent, and they're at eighty-three percent. So they've called all up. Thank goodness for that, getting, getting everything done. One of the things that's been fascinating is the stormwater, and they are, they've got that particularly under control. And, and they're also removing parts of the structure for the River Bridge for the forty-day outlook. So they are moving right along. Very great. Two, I attended the promotions by the Sheriff's Department. It was a very nice ceremony. We have four officers that helped them once, Captain, Sergeant, so these folks are, have our backs here in the county, and it's important for them to be moved up according to civil service after that particular meeting. On the other side, things I've been working on is the snow boy, getting more pictures done to send to Matthews Bronx. They wanted those. That's in process, and people work at the volunteer unit. Now, I'm also working on the county. One of the things we have to do is change the seal. So that's one of the things we have to allocate and purchase some funding to start working on these projects to move. Just letting you know of some, trying to keep you up to date with what's happening. So, interesting.
Yeah.
Have some-
Talk about that celebration a couple months ago.
Right. So we're working on getting that, that organized back. So that's where we are. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Had planning commission meeting Monday. I was a little bit late.
Conflicted or conflicting time?
Conflicting time, another meeting.
I'm sorry.
Both. Thank you, Doug.
For pointing that out?
Yeah, for pointing.
That drains out of station, Jim.
That drains out of station.
Gone.
Yeah. We had several public hearings. There was a couple resident concerns that were properly addressed. However, the outcome is still going to be the same.
Disgruntled.
Yep, yep, they were. And the airport, primary protection zone ordinance was passed by our body to bring this body for implementation, and will be soon. No, I'm sorry. The airport, well, I know that the airport's been involved in it. They like a copy sent to the board members, too.
Figure it.
See if they can do that.
I would hope that we're, we have a meeting coming up next week. Would hope that they would have information on that. Not on our agenda. There is, there is a topic of discussion right now that we're having about properties that are potential questions in that zone.
I'll make sure, uh, to answer, Mr. Deal's on our planning commission board as well as airport.
I have one meeting that I missed due to, I was actually, Tuesday, I was in the parade, and at the same time, I had a suitor dis- couldn't be both places at once. So I, I did, and that's the Christmas parade in downtown Martin. So I missed that. Actually, the night before, they had an event called Jingle Downtown, which was really probably the best one they've had. I think it's five years now they've been having that, where you go to break off in groups, and you go to business to business, the businesses stay open, and go do a little shopping. Nice to see that amount of traffic at night, evening, walking the streets, and enjoying some of the downtown businesses. And on Friday, the town had the annual Christmas tree lighting, and it was without a doubt the largest one. Had a live entertainment put on by airborne church members. I think the whole thing was sponsored by the church as well. And it was, it was, it was a real, real nice event. Nice event to have. Green set up.
Yeah, it was nice. I saw it.
It was, it was, there's some drone pictures out there of it, and just absolutely beautiful, the look of it from the drone.
It was. I saw that on Facebook. Actually, I shared it.
Quite good.
Really nice. Lot of people there, too. But that's all. Enjoying the holiday, in the, you know, all the holiday festivities. Absolutely.
These are living downtown.
It is, it is.
All right. I have nothing to report on. We have some, sending out some thank you letters to John Hillary and Marty LeFevere for the Historical Landmark Board, for several charities. Out to David Clark for Senior Service Board, which has not been reappointed. Thank you letters going out to Lauren Collins, Collins at that, Richard Dennis, and Craig Potter from the Senior Service Board. They are ineligible for reappointment. Reappointment letter received from Elizabeth Lang for the Senior Service Board, her term expires December third, first, so we need to-
Like to reappoint those?
Okay, we did that, I'm sorry.
Like to, second.
Motion been made, seconded. Seconded. Any discussion? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Carries? Yeah.
I'd like to, I'd like to make an appointment, uh, recommendation as well for Ron Fitzpatrick to the airport authority to, to fill, uh, um, uh, Dennis Barron's, uh, remainder of his term. That's correct.
Question been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded, any discussions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Uh, and we have a new application for the LEPC board for Martin Roberts, which we call him as Martin Roberts. Get him in here for interview. And also, I think you, I think I seen email or something coming through, he would like to fill the vacancy on... Have a mind, I agree. Other activities on board and commissions. Not we, Ms. Maltz, you're up, Honorary County Councilperson.
This is Hay, Alexandra Brady, come right up here. Got a few folks here today, you can tell them about your activities in school and which school you go to and all those kind of stuff.
I'm Alexandra Brady, I go to Hedgesville High School. I'm actually the senior class president as well as the swim captain of Hedgesville High Swim. Um, and my plans for college is to go to U of psychology.
Very active, gives us all more reason we needed an indoor pool, right?
Yeah, the closest one's Shepherd, so...
Pretty cold out there, right?
Yes, it is.
Got enough you to go.
Mike Goffin? Uh, Jane Goffin's my girlfriend.
Is that right?
Yes.
Well, I should have met you by now.
Yep.
What's wrong with you, Doug?
Me and Michael are co-captains.
I know, I'm pulling guns out on people before.
Forty-five in the back.
You better quit while you're shot.
Ask, ask Alan Hart.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, I would be a ring.
Swear in the firm.
You swear.
I uphold the constitution, I will, of the United States and West Virginia, hoping that, and West Virginia, I will hard fulfill responsibilities, fulfill responsibility. Office of Attorney.
Now, if you really want to embarrass Jane's father, you go up to him and ask him if he's gonna read the newspaper, put his steak and feed in front of you when you're sitting on the couch, like he did me and his sister when I started dating.
I, I love David, he's my, he's my favorite, one of my favorite men on this planet. He's, he's hilarious.
He is, he's very funny. All right, next on our agenda is Maria Childers, judiciary supervisor, state accountant, with forty-seven schedule, looks like you have forty-five to present those. Okay. Maria, I'm gonna say this is probably, um, possibly a meeting that you've been looking forward to, but maybe not at the same time.
Mixed emotions.
Uh...
Mixed emotions.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Um, yesterday, uh, we did receive, we, we do have a revision as I indicated, so now we have forty-four that we're presenting. Uh, Patricia Clemson, uh, we received a request to hold. There is a replacement check on its way that has to go into, now, the executive that has to administer, so therefore we can't close the estate and, um, terminate her appointment until that's taken care of. So we have forty-four, beginning with Ruston Adams, Margaret Elizabeth Allen, Donald T. Anderson, Jean H. Dalash, Connie Beamer, Emma Rose Becker, Ralph H. Becker, Gordon Glenn Brissette Senior, Charles F. Broome III, Gloria Jane Burkhart, Jerry Wayne Pedro, Dorothy L. Cook, Sherry Jane Dugan, Clarence E. Eaton, Peter Charles Eisen, Carolyn Estelle Elmer, Elizabeth Michelle Beggins, Floyd Wilbur Orum, Ruby Whitlock Harmon, Edith Elizabeth Jenkins, Gregory R. Mountnacoff Senior, Philip L. Martin, James Lynn Mon, Hortense Mills, Shirley A. Parsons, Chris Laverne Paulson, Betty Frances Prather, Ellen Pulse Junior, Florence Josephine Rill, Deborah J. Ronic, which is an interim accounting, Paul Jackson Shad Junior, Frances J. Shade, Gwen Elizabeth Shelley, Michael Wayne Smith, Brady Esten Stone Street, Charles Douglas Tucker, Joyce Carol Bonderwee, Dorothy I. Ware, Bonnie Marie Warnick, Ellen Virginia Watson, Gary B. Watson, Esclay Marie Wise, David James Wokowski, and John Richard Wansett.
Um, all right, need a motion to, uh, approve the forty-four state accounts?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion been made, seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries and the state carries?
We have none this much. Who knows what the first of the year will bring?
Yes.
Mrs. Hethery will, I'm sure, get initiated on that soon enough.
All right, um, okay.
Okay, thank you.
We have that and then we might as well stay there, Maria, we have a proclamation read on their behalf. All right, so, um, this, for, on your service, this, this Maltz read the proclamation, then we can...
Proclamation for Maria Childers. Whereas Maria Childers has been a lifelong resident of Berkeley County, but visit the historic courthouse in a little pink dress with her grandfather Ernest Alter, who was at one time president of Berkeley County Commission. And whereas it was at that point in time when Maria was introduced to the honorable John W. Small, junior county clerk, who would eventually offer her a full-time position after she completed high school and with her employment with Berkeley County began on July first, nineteen seventy-eight. Whereas Maria started out as an assistant to Mrs. Mildred Caldwell, who at the time handled all the estates for the county along with minute keeping. And whereas upon Mrs. Caldwell's retirement, July thirty-first, nineteen eighty-seven, Maria was appointed to take over her position as judiciary supervisor and Maria began handling all the estates for Berkeley County by herself. And whereas as the county grew, the commission approved funding for an additional position to assist her and Maria interviewed and hired Janet Hosslinger in nineteen eighty-nine, who's been with Maria ever since. And whereas Mrs., Mr. John Small acknowledged Maria's dedication to the county, having an outreach program where we should go beyond to assist citizens in Berkeley County by visiting hospitals, hospice or private homes for citizens in their time of need, has had compassion for people in their most difficult time of need. Whereas on December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, Maria Childers will retire as judiciary supervisor of the Berkeley County Council on serving the county forty-one years. Now therefore be resolved that Berkeley County Council thank Maria Childers for her years of service, dedication to Berkeley County citizens, wishes her well in her retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Um, I appreciate that. Yes, it's a very emotional time, but, um, my many years as the council, um, I, I can't say anything negative. Uh, it's been a wonderful experience. I've made friends and acquaintances and every commission and every council I have worked under, uh, wonderful relationship, most accommodating and, um, I'm just grateful to have had the opportunity to, um, to serve. Very appreciative.
Maria, um, uh, take me, how you doing, concession? Serious. Last eight years and, uh, you ran your office, be the best in the state of West Virginia. We've had that conversation before. People like you and others in this county that makes Berkeley County who it is. Your possession, you're dealing with some, your clients come through that door as, dealing with some of the toughest, uh, I love them. Done it with honor and respect and nothing.
Well, strive to achieve that, have met that. Um, I'm not comfortable with this mission of something accolades because I truly don't feel that I've done anything extraordinary. I, I really don't. But I do, I appreciate that and, um, it's very good to know that I will be leaving the office best handled possible.
Anyone else from the county council or staff?
I'd like to say that it was about twenty years I was in your office quite a bit with different estates I was handling and...
Yes, Mrs. Maltz and I go back a long way in the state administration.
And, uh, you know, you always, uh, you, you listen well and, uh, I'd get excited about something in the code somewhere and I knew there's gotta be an, you know, someplace you can make a turn in there or no, Elaine, you gotta do it this way, but I really appreciated that friendship and, um, long time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I'll, I'll say thank you for dedicating your career to Berkeley County and I think anytime anybody puts as much time into something that, that you have, obviously it's got, it has to be dear to your heart, so hopefully, uh, hopefully, um, it, it will be, uh, it will be ran the way that, that you, um, you feel comfortable with moving forward and, and hopefully you'll enjoy your retirement.
Yeah. Um, and I've used this phrase several times, people have spoken to me about this. I know I'm gonna have some depression anxiety eventually, I know I will, but, um, it is to move on, surrender the mantle. And it's just that phrase.
Any word from the audience?
I would just like to say... Knowing it's been a few pressure, I wish you could ask.
Thanks.
I would just like... Nineteen eighty... Been a long time. Really enjoy... People. I'm often, really gets involved. Saying something new. I love what I do, I love the people that I deal with, she and I then have become like sisters. Even your forty-one years, I'm normal. Some years, I, I enjoy every day. I'm good, always been. Overall, it's been... Thank you.
Thank you.
What else?
If I could, uh, Mr. President.
Absolutely, Mr. President.
Legal. Maria has taught a lot of lawyers. Probate law. Lawyers come out of law school and they can know everything. I'm legal. Done the practical part of... And she's, she has always been very pleasant. Not hesitant to say, Mr. Bentley, look at this code section, that'll turn around here. She's been very helpful to lawyers over the years. I've never heard a lawyer speak ill of her. Always been appreciative of service that she had provided, not only to families and ministry of the states, to lawyers who try to help. I'll miss her. Done a good job and I think she's correct, I think she's left, leaving, uh, at the end of the month. Simple. Thank you.
Maria, if I could, you, uh, chuckle before you, before you leave, but for how many times I sit up here and listen to you pronounce all these names correctly?
There goes.
And very thankful...
She stuttered just a second on one of them today.
I did, I did today, I stuttered.
And I'm very thankful it's not me. So, uh, thank you.
All of you. Triple ride.
Just, just one other thing, you know, when, it's not only Berkeley County, but the state of West Virginia she has to deal with. It's also Virginia, Maryland, over the whole United States. She has to know not what happens in Berkeley County, but also what has to be done in fiduciaries in other states.
Have a lot of residents moving to states and to advise them to...
I had all the proper paperwork that I needed, so thank you.
Wait a second, you can get accustomed to coming up to the podium, Miss Patrick.
You know I don't like to use the microphone.
I'm glad it comes with the position.
Yeah, okay, all right. If I could just follow up, Norwood kind of stole my thunder there a little bit. I don't think there is any amount of education or training that can replace what Maria has and that is the experience of being in the position, dealing with the public, good and bad. Public service is a very difficult place to be and you take what walks through the door and have to be gracious and accommodating and, uh, informative, all at the same time and suppress everything that might be your natural instinct at that point in time and, and no one does it better than Maria. And everyone, I think the community at large respects that, acknowledges that and, and in all of her conversations that she has, if people still come in and ask for Maria by name, it's gonna be very difficult to assume that and take over and run the office the way she's run it in the past, so.
Just, just, just one other thing, it's like, if I'm mistaken, what I'm giving ready to say, Norwood, correct me, that lawyers have the, the degree to practice law, Maria's the professional.
Exactly.
I'm not gonna touch that.
But isn't that true, I mean, when all lawyers graduate with, with the license to practice law? But Maria is the professional, so thank you.
I'm not gonna say anything there.
As well as doctors, they have the, the degree to practice medicine.
Right.
So it's always learning.
Thank God, we don't need a degree.
Thank goodness. I'm done.
Yes.
About fourteen years ago, Maria took a chance on me, has regretted it ever since.
Well, we know better than that.
I, she's been my mentor, my teacher, and for some reason my, my psychiatrist. And, and has taught me so much and I was... And I love Maria. Come and see us. And I always tease her, one day she'll, she'll, she'll be back. She'll be back, she ain't gonna retire, I refuse to believe it. I refuse to believe it, but I love you, Maria. Thank you.
Ms. Cackley?
Whether I was gonna... But I guess as the elder person... Uh-oh, here comes Mr. P. So I'm gonna take that one back.
Well, you said it right in time.
Uh, but Maria and I have many, many years.
Uh, but Maria and I have many, many years of working for Berkeley County. She, um, has always displayed professionalism. Her knowledge is, um, unbounding. And it's only surpassed by the empathy and compassion that she shows to those people that are experiencing, uh, excessive paperwork and policies and procedures that have to be followed after they've lost a loved one. She is, uh, very respected. Uh, you men, you mentioned Maria's name and, um, it'll be, oh, the lady in fiduciary that helped us with the estate. And I can't tell you how much I've enjoyed for many years, us knowing and being together. I have you by several, I have you by several years, but I started at a much earlier age and but, uh, we're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience?
I didn't become a county employee until, uh, the first time, uh, around twenty fifteen and Maria was one of those ones that welcomed people into the courthouse, you know. Boys, she'd come around and say, hey, welcome aboard. And yes, technically she falls under, under you folks. But we also felt with Mr. Small throughout the years and all of that, so we always felt of her as one of our family members as well down at the courthouse. And she welcomed everybody with open arms and that wasn't just employees. I, I heard some of the accolades referring to the folks that come into the office for fiduciary and probate and wow. I mean, when people come down and I've worked that lobby desk many a time and, uh, I've said, try and have a good day, 'cause some of them would come out very visibly upset and what have you. And they would often say, Maria, that lady is a godsend. She helped ease and I heard those same accolades from, from Judy and Janet as well, but Maria, thank you for welcoming me as a new county employee back in twenty fifteen, twenty fifteen timeframe, so thank you.
Mr. Hill?
Gloria. I'll use the word commissioner since I'm more familiar with that. For about thirty-five years or so, I've had an opportunity to hear before this body and several occasions. Today would be unique for purpose. For that period of time, I've known Maria as both an attorney and as one of your fiduciary commissioners. And I, I can, I can attest without reservation that during that period of time, she possessed a, a, a unique ability to both deal with people on a personal basis as well as semi-legal basis. And that's a talent that people don't possess. It's extremely difficult to interface with people, as I said earlier, at a time of emotional family strife a lot of times, regretfully, uh, and yet to do so in a professional manner that people know they've been treated with respect and dignity at a, a very difficult time in life. I can attest to her technical capacity in the cases that I've worked on with her. Never had a word of disagreement. Cooperative responses. She will be missed by the, by this body, by Mr. Small's office and by the county at large. And it's my privilege to work with her for this period, that period of time. And I think that, um, you're gonna have a hard time filling your shoes. Waiting to my left, uh, will, will come as close as anybody that you could have chosen for that particular job in, in the county government. So, um, wanted to commend somebody, I guess Mr. Small originally should probably hire you for it. That was where I'd leave the horn. And I'm, uh, over sixty-five. I, um, appreciate being told about this. And lastly, I wanted to know that I could not avoid the subpoena issued to me by Mr. Bentley. Those things today should, uh, should be complied with as soon as possible. So, I'm here voluntarily for this occasion. I just wanted to commend Maria publicly and, um, let you all know what I thought of her long period.
Thanks, Brian.
Anyone else? If not, we're gonna go move on to the Honorable John Small Jr., county clerk, to recognize, uh, Maria.
Good morning, county council and president.
Good morning, sir.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here here before you in fifty-five and I think it's most good time, but Maria here seems to matter to me. I've known her since she was a debutant in the NDR. He's, he was on the county commission at the time and, uh, he took her out, he used to bring her in the office every chance he had. But I still remember that little pink dress he put on here. We've been friends for I'll say well, my friends with family before even coming to courthouse. And Maria and I have known each other, I guess, for about forty-two, forty-three years. Sixty-two years.
I'll, I'll say it out loud. I'm sixty-two in the family.
She's a wonderful person. Uh, she's gonna be missed. And if there's anybody please in, uh, public service to the, in courtesy service to the public, it's Maria. She goes behind her beyond the call of duty to help people and even comes down on the weekends, are used to, to help people out that travel through here and had to do it on their own sake. But I can't say, I, I don't know how to explain the quantities of this lady. Y'all have been there for many. At this time, I'm gonna ask John Alderman, uh, deputy, to read a certificate of appreciation.
And I will say, Mr. Small, you were my mentor in that regard, so.
Please, I'll become
I know you do. I know you do.
Mr. Small has a Maria and agreed as follows. Berkeley County County Clerk recognition presented to Maria Childers to commemorate a career of retirement of forty-one years. This certificate to honor, recognize, commitment, dedication, and praiseworthy service to the history of probate law in Berkeley County, the citizens of Berkeley County. I want to take this time to recognize your extraordinary service, which began in my office June second, nineteen seventy-seven, where you served as through June thirtieth, nineteen seventy-eight. Then on one July of nineteen seventy-eight, July thirtieth, nineteen eighty-seven, you served as the full-time assistant. It was on July thirty-first, nineteen eighty-seven, reached another platform. You remain to be the head fiduciary secretary. During our forty-one years, I during your forty-one years, you understand you've had I am honored to witness your own changed career. Yet so with honor and merit to a, your immaculate, your immaculate high standards of professionalism always stood out. I felt this that days of yesteryear when you first started coming into the historic courthouse in your little pink dress. With your grandfather, Ernest E. Hopper, who was at one time a president of the commission. You would be very successful. That belief has you've been extremely successful. I can't think of you to express my thanks, gratitude, admiration. Throughout the years, you've remained a true and I value your friendship and you will ever realize. Please know that heritage of office and the fiduciary of probate law in Berkeley County has been and has been and will be humane and gentle as you make your, your service. Enjoy your retirement, so you will be given the fifth day of December twenty nineteen senior on your
At this time, we'll take folks for photos. Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. We're not gonna take break now. Need a, a motion to adopt the proclamation for Maria?
So, who's her?
The motion denied, seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If anyone opposed, the motion carries and if acceptable, I'll break now. And if acceptable, I'll break now.
Well, I go by Scott. Raleigh is hard to spell and everybody can spell Scott. So call me Scott. I was raised in this area in Martinsburg. I moved away after college and was gone for about thirty-five years and moved back about eight years ago and remarried here. And I've been not too involved with the community. I have helped with the planning commission on the city board. But I am looking for opportunities to expand and get more involved in things. I've had a lot of work to do on the house we bought. Finished that up now. I have some more free time. I'm particularly interested in senior services because I'm dealing with that at home. My parents are both quite senior and as are my wife's parents. So we're dealing with them. So I just wanted to get more involved in that kind of activity.
This is a very relaxing conversation. So no reason to be nervous, but we'll just go through and see if anybody has any questions for you. We don't point at the meet, at the interview, but after, after we have the interview, a week or so after. But it's small, but you're on board, so.
Well, evidently you said you finished the house and now you have more free time. It's the third or fourth Wednesday of the month around three o'clock. Is that?
No problem at all.
Your father was Dr. It's Dr. Hamilton?
Yes.
I want my aunt went to school with him. Her stories, but we won't. I appreciate your efforts. Are you interested? For seniors, you have all kinds of things from wheels on wheels to actual home care and also in-house services there at the facility. Do you have any ideas of what? Or have you been able to attend any of the meetings or?
No, I have not.
So well, I appreciate you applying and we can always use good members, particularly these people that have some time because they have a, when's the Christmas tea coming up, Richard?
Next week, this weekend.
Hey, the tea comes up this weekend. So, but there's a lot of events coming up and they always need assistance. So I really appreciate you being interested. Thank you.
Okay.
Whitaker. Scott, I, like you have aging parents, my dad is actually in a facility with, I think, your, maybe your aunt at a harmony.
Yep.
And so I saw your dad out there one day and, and yeah, he was, he was my doctor, actually brought me into this world and probably my dad wanted to take me out a few times. But I gotta tell you a story that my dad, when he was born, he was born at home up in Cross Junction, Virginia. A doctor came to the house in delivery and cost my grandfather thirty-five dollars and I was back in nineteen thirty.
How's that near Whitaker?
Well, just right outside of Whitaker, Virginia. And then when I was born, my dad wrote out a check to your dad thirty years later. It was three hundred and fifty dollars. I thought that I still have that check, so.
I hate to think what it'd be right now.
I'd hate to think what it would be, especially if there's any complications.
I'm sure your dad said it was the best money he ever spent.
I don't know. If he thought he could bounce the check, he probably would have.
There was probably days he wanted his money back.
Yeah, but anyway, thank you for your interest in the aging community and I'm right there with you.
Well, Scott, thanks for, thanks for applying, getting involved or wanting to get involved in, in helping out with the community. Senior services is very, very important to take care of the senior citizens here. You would be on a board that has one less worry they have to deal with and that's the upkeep of the building.
Yeah, I heard that.
We've just recently helped them to solve that problem that they've been dealing with for many years. So thanks for, thanks for applying.
Scott, I think one of the things, you got some great references here, but one of the things that you said that means a lot to me is you're, you get bored very easily. So I've always looked for high-energy people because those are the ones that get things done. And background of your family, yourself on your application helps you, you might be a huge asset to seniors. And for the other part about it is, is the ones that we realize that the ones that are promising this work, we brought the county where they are now, it's our turn to assist them. It's a special person. So thank you for being here. All right, next, welcome back.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Told you it was easy. All right. Next for board and commission candidate for LEPC is Jennifer Sheetroom. Didn't think I could announce that, did you Penny?
How many, how many times were you told that?
Good thing I called her out in the hallway.
Yes.
All right, Jennifer, same thing. You tell us a little bit about yourself, why you want to serve and, and a bit of your background.
Okay. Well, again, my name's Jennifer Sheetroom and yes, it's a nightmare to pronounce and if you look at the spelling of the name, it doesn't really match up. I've actually been with the Berkeley Morgan County Board of Health for a little over a year. I'm the threat preparedness and health promotion coordinator. So with my role in threat preparedness, it makes sense that I am part of the LEPC. So I've actually been attending the meetings for a little over the year, a year anyway. So regardless of whether I'm a voting member on the board, I'm still going to be there. It's been a big learning experience for me. It's actually helped me in my role at the health department with the community collaboration that makes up the LEPC. I think that's really important that you have your first responding professionals, businesses, industries and community members at the same table with preparedness. I think that's huge and to know what's going on in the community from all those aspects has it all together. My background technically, a lot of it's in business management, project management and implementation. So I kind of use that to help with, you know, planning and I read a lot of, you know, drills and things like that, the exercises that come up. So I'm hoping that that'll help, you know, as we move forward with continuing to plan for disaster and preparedness.
Great. So like you're well experienced in who we would be looking for.
Well, because I know that you've been attending meetings for last year. So you are currently living in Gray Key?
Yeah, I'm from Morgan County.
The biggest thing about our LEPC is trying to bring together all the emergency services and try to get things done as soon as possible. Do you have any ideas on, do you think it's being left out or is that being covered?
I think there's always room for improvement in every committee usually. So yeah, there's always bridges that need to be, you know, worked out and manned in a different way. But yeah, there's always room for improvement. So we have the same thing actually in Morgan as well. So we're just revamping there. So I'm hoping that there can actually be lessons learned on both ends because at the end of the day, to me, if a disaster happens, it doesn't know county lines. It doesn't know state lines. So the more we can work and coordinate on multiple levels, whether you're state, county, first responders, community. It's going to take everybody working together anyway. So you should always be working towards that goal of everybody, you know, on the same page.
Everybody's in the boat together.
That's exactly right.
Biggest issue we have in some areas, Morgan County, and then Berkeley has a few of them, some of these roads that don't know to be accessed to get, get help there.
Right.
Thank you for applying.
I think Jennifer, another thing is every situation is different.
True.
You've got to be constantly trying to improve on what you've done or how, what about this happens again or this happens differently. So I'm in agreement with you. Any committee, it always could be looked at and approved upon or we shouldn't be. Whitaker, I'll shut up and let you.
I tell you, there's, there's a whole lot I can really ask other than after reading what your application said, I think you'd be set to that.
Pretty much the same thing I said before. Thanks for getting involved in the, or wanting to get involved in helping the community out. And it sounds like, it sounds like you're already on that path, so.
Yeah, and one thing, Mr. Barnhart was here and he'd ask you if you would have time to attend the meetings. Actually, if you're attending them already, I don't think that's a, that's a situation. You've got some great references with Bill and Angie. Wonderful work. Looking forward to a relationship in the future.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, Gary Wine, Deputy County Administrator, financial software. Good morning, sir. How you doing?
Good. So I'm not asking you to spend any money.
Glad you cleared that up right off.
Right off the bat. Got to get that out front. So just a bit of background. We use a piece of, a piece of financial software that dates probably back to the early eighties. It runs in a pretty dated environment. It runs on what is now an old IBM AS400. It's a mid-range environment. We use a little, a little technical. We use an environment where we do fifty-two fifty emulation as a client to the server to do stuff. So you'll look at it and probably say, ooh, it looks like a DOS screen. So if you will, it's a green screen that's all characters ready, right? There's no bull buttons and dragon dot and all that stuff. It runs in a mode that's considered to be a batch environment. So we work, we put stuff in, we look at it and then we post it. Ta-da. The, the reports and everything gets updated. So there's no dynamic movement of the financial numbers in a real firm environment. It's all batch. The industry, as you well can imagine, since the early eighties has changed. So there are, there are big packages tailored around what governments like us do nowadays that are inclusive of not just accounting, but human resources, time and attendance, and, and all kinds of other things that we, we don't do well. We do some of that.
I won't say we don't do well, but it could be improved upon.
Oh, my goodness, yes. Yes, sir.
I can't imagine it's not doing anything really well or well.
Well, it, but I mean, by that, I mean that we, we're not leveraging the technology that's out there for us, right? So not that anybody's making mistakes. It's just that the industry and the opportunities have changed. We reviewed, know that this particular piece of the process is a function of the county clerk. So this is driven by the clerk's request. This is something that the clerk is interested in evaluating and potentially doing. So what I'm here today to stand in front of you is to ask for the blessing to just go through the RFP process and evaluate what the market has for us and put a, a number on exactly what it is. No commitment in financing, not sure we can afford to do it. But just to give you some examples of things that don't happen now we could. So the processes that we write purchase orders, you sign purchase orders, they go to finance and they get paid. That all is reflected on reports that are paper-driven, that are handed to your county administrator. You may want to know, hey, Mr. Davis, what's, what's our financial status today? Well, know in our environment today, true financial snapshot is about six weeks off because it takes that long for the numbers to get right. That's just how it works. In this environment with the, the software that's out there today, it can be, it can be down to the transaction at this moment in time. So, and the process is for Alan to see a control report, he's, it's a request to man. They make the time to do it and they give him a tree trunk print and he prints it and he reads through it. All of that's eliminated. Now, in, in the environment of today, there are roles and levels. So you're not injecting the county council into the county clerk's processes. You're merely giving them the opportunity to interpret and query and suggest within the software itself. So Alan wants to see an expenditure report from one of the departments I'm responsible for, he doesn't have to ask me and he doesn't have to ask finance. He just does it. And the same goes for dashboarding for senior executives like yourself. Want to look in it, you want to look at the charge and see how much is spent, you trend it from here to there, it's been out forever. We are just behind you. We're not there yet. Some of that has been sticking point with staffing. I can tell you that we demoed a piece of software, the county clerk did, and then my friend, her team came out of it like, well, I can't, I could show you the email screen. They've asked, well, when are we getting it? It's like, oh, nobody's buying anything. At the same time, your HR level, Annie and the team that she works with, the onboarding of new employees, you should see that now. It's painful how you get onboarded here as an employee. A whole bunch of paper, a whole bunch of processes, a whole bunch of visits. You're onboarded within this kind of, it all starts at the application process. So I come in and apply to the book. I go online, I apply. It goes to Alan, they interview him, Penny, whoever interviews him, they select him, all of that. Then included all of my information follows me to the next step, which is Penny, who brings you on and gets you any insurance and all that kind of stuff. She then now prints it up out. All flows right through the same piece of software to finance. All of the stuff they attach your W nine and four and all that stuff, that goes there. And the next thing you know, you're getting a paycheck, all driven the same way. So there, what now is probably hours of processes and paper and paper and paper. It goes away. It's eliminated. And we just looked at one, was just to kind of see and everybody, everybody involved. Then we let Alan, let him talk to Alan. He, he's not real excitable, isn't he? But if you could have seen his face, it looked like an early Christmas present that he saw. I think it, and he referred to you two and he said, oh, I can answer their questions like that when they call now. So it really takes it to another level. So if there's interest by this body, we would love to go through the exercises and see what, what is out there and see where the numbers lay.
So is this program tied to purchasing as well? So they purchase through this program. So as soon as they purchase through this program, even if they're not writing a check, they purchase through the program, they accuse the system to, to take that from the total or show it as a debit.
It does. And it can, it can get.
Kind of like what we ran across this morning.
Exactly. It can get really creative. So let's just say.
Uh, your father was Dr., is Dr. Hamilton?
Yes.
I want, my aunt went to school with him. Her stories, but we won't. Uh, I appreciate your efforts, and are you interested, as for seniors, you have all kinds of things from, uh, wheels on wheels to actual home care and also in-house services there at the facility. Uh, do you have any ideas on what, or have you been able to attend any of the meetings or?
No, I have not.
So, well, I appreciate you applying, and we can always use good members, particularly these people that have some time, because they have a, when's the Christmas tea coming up, Richard?
Next week, this weekend.
Hey, the tea comes up this weekend. So, uh, but there's a lot of events coming up and they always need assistance, so I really appreciate you being interested. Thank you.
Okay.
Whitaker.
Scott, I, uh, like you have aging parents, my, uh, my dad is, uh, actually in a facility with, I think, your, maybe your aunt, at a harmony?
Yep.
And, uh, so I saw your dad out there one day and, and, uh, yeah, he was, he was my doctor, actually brought me into this world and probably my dad wanted to take me out a few times, but, uh, but I, I gotta tell you a story that my dad, when he was born, he was born at home up in Cross Junction, Virginia. A doctor came to the house in delivery and cost my grandfather thirty-five dollars, and that was back in nineteen-third.
How's that near Whitaker?
Well, just right outside of Whitaker, Virginia. And then, when I was born, my dad wrote out a check to your dad thirty years later, it was three hundred and fifty dollars. I thought that I still have that check, so.
I hate to think what it'd be right now.
I'd hate to think what it would be, especially if there's any complications, but.
I'm sure your dad said it was the best money you ever spent.
I don't know, if he thought he could bounce the check, he probably would've.
I'm sure there was probably days he wanted his money back.
Yeah, but anyway, uh, thank you for your interest in, in the aging community and I'm right there with you.
Okay.
Hell, yay.
Well, Scott, thanks for, uh, thanks for applying, getting involved, uh, or wanting to get involved in, uh, in helping out with, uh, the community. Um, senior services is very, uh, very important to take care of the senior citizens here. Um, you would be, uh, on a board that has one less worry they have to deal with, and that's the upkeep of the building.
Yeah, I heard that.
We've just recently helped them, um, to solve that problem that they've, uh, been dealing with for many years, so, um, thanks for, uh, thanks for applying.
Scott, I think, uh, one of the things, you got some great references here, but, um, one of the things that you said that means a lot to me is you're, you get bored very easily.
Yeah.
Uh, so I've always looked for high-energy people because those are the ones that get things done. And background of your family, yourself, on your application helps you, uh, you might be a huge asset to seniors. And for, the other part about it is, is the ones that we realized that the ones that probably send this over, we're going to county where they are now, it's our turn to assist them, it's a special person, so, uh, thank you for being here. All right, next thing, welcome back.
All right.
All right. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Told you it was easy. All right, um, next, uh, for board and commission candidate for LEPC is Jennifer She- Sheetroo. Didn't think I could pronounce that, did you Penny?
You're good.
How many, how many times were you told that?
Good thing I called her out in the hallway.
Yes.
All right, Jennifer, same thing, you can tell us a little bit about yourself, why you want to serve, and, um, and, uh, and a little bit of your background.
Okay. Uh, well, again, my name's Jennifer Sheetroo, and yes, it's a nightmare to pronounce, and if you look at the spelling of the name, it doesn't really match up. Um, I've actually been with the Brooklyn Morgan County Board of Health for a little over a year, so I'm the Threat Preparedness and Health Promotion Coordinator. So with my role in threat preparedness, it makes sense that I am part of the LEPC. So I've actually been attending the meetings for a little over the year, a year anyway. So regardless of whether I'm a voting member on the board, I'm still gonna be there. Um, it's been a, a big learning experience for me, it's actually helped me in my role at the Health Department with the community collaboration that makes up the LEPC. I think that's really important, that you have your first responding professionals, businesses, industries, and community members at the same table, um, with preparedness, I think that's huge. And to know what's going on in the community, um, from all those aspects, ties it all together. My background technically, a lot of it's in business management, project management, and implementation. So I kind of use that to help with, you know, planning and, uh, I read a lot of, you know, drills and things like that, the exercises that come up, so I'm hoping that that'll help, you know, as we move forward with continuing to plan for disaster and preparedness.
Right, so like you're well experienced in, in who we would be looking for, so.
Well, uh, because I know that you've been attending meetings for last year, um, so you are currently living in Gray Keefe?
Yeah, I'm from Morgan County.
Uh, the, uh, biggest thing about our, our LEPC is trying to bring together all the emergency services and try to get things organized towards. Uh, do you have any ideas on, uh, anything that's being left out, or is that being covered?
I think there's always room for improvement in every committee usually. Um, so yeah, there's always bridges that need to be, you know, worked out and manned in a different way, but yeah, there's always room for improvement, so. Um, we have the same thing actually in Morgan as well, so we're just revamping there. Um, so I'm hoping that there can actually be lessons learned on both ends, because at the end of the day, to me, if a disaster happens, it doesn't know county lines, it doesn't know state lines, so the more we can work and coordinate on multiple levels, whether you're state, county, um, first responders, community, it's gonna take everybody working together anyway, so you should always be working towards that goal of everybody, you know, on the same page, in the same room.
Everybody's in the boat together.
That's exactly right.
Biggest issue we have in some areas, Morgan County, and then Berkeley has a few of them, some of these nodes that don't know to be accessed, to get, get help then.
Right.
Thank you for applying.
I think, Jennifer, another thing is, every situation is different, so.
True.
You gotta be in constant time to improve on what you've done, or how, what about this happens again, or this happens differently, and so I'm in agreement with you, any committee that always could be looked at and approved upon, or, and, uh, we shouldn't be fine for it. Whitaker, I'll shut up and let you, uh.
I tell you, there's, there's a whole lot I can really ask, other than after reading what your, uh, application said, I think you'd be set to that.
Pretty much the same thing I said before, thanks for getting involved in the, um, or wanting to get involved in helping the community out, and it sounds like, it sounds like you're already on that path, so.
Yeah, and, and one thing, Mr. Barnhart was here, he'd ask you if you would have time to, uh, attend the meetings, and actually, if you're attending them already, I don't think that's a, that's a situation. You've got some great references with Bill and Angie, wonderful work, and looking forward to relationship in the future, I think.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, our other Gary Wine, Deputy County Administrator, Financial Software. Good morning, sir, how you doing?
So I'm not asking you to spend any money, just getting.
Glad you cleared that up right off.
Right off the bat, gotta get that out front. Um, so, just a bit of background, um, we use a piece of, a piece of financial software that dates probably back to the early eighties. Uh, it runs in a pretty dated environment, it runs on what is now an old IBM AS400, uh, it's a mid-range environment. We use a little, a little technical, we use an environment where we do fifty-two-fifty emulation as a client to the server to do stuff, so you'll look at it and probably say, ooh, it looks like a Dawson screen. So if you will, it's a green screen that's all character grid, right? There's no bull buttons and dragon gong and all that stuff. It runs in a mode that's considered to be a batch environment, so we work, we put stuff in, we look at it, and then we post it, ta-da, the, the reports and everything gets updated. So there's no dynamic movement of the financial numbers in a real firm environment, it's all batch. The industry, as you well can imagine, since the early eighties, has changed it. Um, so there are, there, there are big packages tailored around what governments like us do nowadays, that are inclusive of not just accounting, but, uh, human resources, time and attendance, and, and all kinds of other things that we, we don't do well. Um, we do some of that.
I won't say we don't do well, but it could be improved upon.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
I can't imagine it's not doing anything really well, or well.
Well, it, but I mean, by that, I mean, that we, we're not leveraging the technology that's out there for us, right? So, not that anybody's making mistakes, it's just that the industry and the opportunities have changed. Um, we review, know that this particular piece of the process is a function of the county clerk. So this is driven by the clerk's request, this is something that the clerk is interested in evaluating and potentially doing. So what I'm here today to stand in front of you is to ask for the blessing to just go through the RFP process and evaluate what the market has for us and put a, a number on exactly what it is. No commitment in financing, not sure we can afford to do it, but just to give you some examples of things that don't happen now that could. So, the processes that we write purchase orders, you sign purchase orders, they go to finance and they get paid, that all is reflected on reports that are paper-driven, that are handed to your county administrator, you may want to know, hey, Mr. Davis, what's, what's our financial status today? Well, no, in our environment today, true financial snapshot is about six weeks off, because it takes that long for the numbers to get right, that's just how it works. In this environment with the, the software that's out there today, it can be, it can be down to the transaction at this moment in time, so. And the process is for Alan to see a control report, he's, it's a request to man, they make the time to do it, and they give him a tree trunk print, and he prints it, and he reads through it. All of that's eliminated. Now, in, in the environment of today, there are roles and levels, so you're not injecting the county council into the county clerk's processes, you're merely giving them the opportunity to interpret and query and suggest within the software itself. So if Alan wants to see an expenditure report from one of the departments I'm responsible for, he doesn't have to ask me, and he doesn't have to ask finance, he just does it. And the same goes for dashboarding for senior executives like yourself. You want to look in it, you want to look at the charts and see how much is spent, you print it from here to there, it's been out forever, we are just behind, you're not there yet. Some of that has been sticking point with staffing. I can tell you that we demoed a piece of software, the county clerk did, and then Myra and her team came out of it like, well, I can't, I had to show you the email screen, they've asked, well, when are we getting, it's like, oh, nobody's buying anything. Uh, at the same time, uh, your HR level, Annie and the team that she works with, the onboarding of new employees, you should see that now. It's painful how you get onboarded here as an employee. A bunch of paper, a whole bunch of processes, a whole bunch of visits, you're onboarded within this kind of, it all starts at the application process. So I come in and apply to be booked, I go online, I apply, it goes to, Alan may interview him, Penny, whoever interviews him, they select him, all of that, then included all of my information follows me to the next step, which is Penny, who brings you on and gets you in the insurance and all that kind of stuff. She then now prints stuff out, all flows right through the same piece of software to finance, all of the stuff, they attach your W nine and four and all that stuff, that goes there, and the next thing you know, you're getting a paycheck, all driven the same way. So there, what now is probably hours of processes and paper and paper and paper, it's a what? It's eliminated. And we just looked at one, was just to kind of see and everybody, everybody involved. Then we let Alan, let him talk to Alan. Uh, he, he's not real excitable, he isn't, but if you could've seen his face, it looked like an early Christmas present that he saw. I think it, and he referred to you two, and he said, oh, I can answer their questions like that when they call now, so it really takes it to another level. Um, so if there's interest by this body, we would love to go through the exercises and see what, what is out there and see where the numbers lay.
So is this program tied to purchasing as well?
For sure.
So they purchase through this program, so as soon as they purchase through this program, even if they're not writing a check?
That's correct.
They purchase through the program, they accuse the system to, to take that from the total, or show it as a debit.
It does, and it can, it can get, what we ran across this morning. Exactly. It can get really creative, so let's just say, and the purchasing piece, these programs do really well, but it can take it to a level that gets real scary even for the computer guy like myself. So we can tie our Amazon account to the computer program, and I make a request, no more purchase orders or requisitions, like when the computer system is at the point, I say I want to buy widget ten, what vendor you want to buy widget ten from? I prefer it from Amazon, goes to purchasing, purchasing does the pricing model that they do, it works with Amazon, it comes to the approving body for, when the purchase order gets approved, it just goes to Amazon, buys it, and it just gets approved. It eliminates all, so it can do it, particular pieces of software can do that, yes. So it does tag. We have a procedure and problem now with our software, when we make a purchase, it gets approved, and the money gets encumbered and tied to a particular line item in my department. Let's just say, when I went to order it, they didn't have four anymore, they only had three, and they're unavailable, so there's essentially a credit from the vendor, or that comes back here. You should see the process for us to ensure that that one, that one order, that one piece of money ends up back credited to my line item, so.
Or, and we're getting charged the price that we got quoted.
That's correct, all of that's eliminated. So, so it's a, since it's an all-inclusive flow in the process, there are no separations where it hits paper or it ends up on a desk in a file cabinet, you know, so I know that I paid ten dollars, purchasing system, I can get it from nine-seventy-five now, that tracking trend is in the system, so the next time that widget's purchased, everybody knows. It's not just, well, if Tracy or Gary or Alan or Penny weren't available, and it was that one person that had that intimate knowledge of, hey, this is a big deal, it's in there. So, it, there's, it's a big step.
Well, it sounds like a no-brainer to me, that, that we at least explore the possibilities and, and, uh, and see what we're up with anyway, at least the cost.
Right.
The other thing that, most of the financial software programs have budgeting, leave me drives, process, this would take us to the next.
So, so your application for your budget allocation starts within this piece of software, so we operate, you operate agnostic of the budget process. You're, you're set off, and you go out here and we go through this whole gyration and all of this, all of this stuff, and it's, we bring you real-time information when you're discussing it, but imagine if you were real-time, we're tied to the budgeting and accounting software as we're preparing, right? So you want to trend, or you want to see something this live that day, so I make my budget application, anything you want to know historically is at your fingertips to ask.
Of course, we want to, uh, be progressive and extend our, our electric, electronic way of doing accounting rather than going back to paper and pen.
Please, please, we want to slow the process down because it's confusing, we want to make it go smoother and faster.
Well, that's definitely, that's definitely a downside of the whole system, because I, I've, I've heard rumors there's a candidate running for office that wants to go back to pen and paper.
I'm just a computer guy.
The, the other thing that this will allow us to do, particularly we, once we get some historical data into, down the road, a lot of times during the budget process, we set in here in January for March, or budgets, you'll see that, you know, department head or elected official, and we use supplies materials as an example, had ten thousand dollars budgeted this year, current fiscal year, we're going through their, and they've requested twelve or fourteen thousand, next fiscal year, look at, expended and encumbered, they've only, they've only expended ten percent. We know that at the end of the year, that's pretty much going to be spent down, so we can start to, without having to manually, we can start to track those trends, and we can see, oh yeah, May and June, they're just, they're buying cases, we would tell them just to spend their money. So, there's going to be analytical data available to us that we never, easily, to us that we never had. The other thing that it could allow us to do, depending on the software, we can bring payroll back, um, and do, do what my pay is due in-house without going through all the durations.
But then, you're right, if this council does ask for you, Mr. Davis and Mr. White, to give us all kinds of stats, and you said, you said, track spending further out at a certain time of year, do they explore it at the end of the year, is that, uh, unencumbered fund bound, or com, encumbered fund bound? I should say, is the slush fund growing or bleeding? We track all that, but with, as Mr. Davis says, special efforts between you two, I'm saying, this works out.
And, and it provides the level of auditing and information sharing to the department heads themselves, and to the constabulary officers, right? So the, the piece of software that you use now does not provide that. So if the, let's just say, the prosecuting attorney wants to evaluate the processes and the spending habits within her department, it's a manual process, she would have a dashboard to her departments, to her responsibility, and be able to do that herself. So it, it just takes the level of, uh, information and its sharing and availability completely to the moon and back from where we are today. Um, obviously costs associated, my, my gut is, is probably a two to three hundred thousand dollar expenditure, I mean, it's not cheap. Um, and Alan mentioned payroll, so right now we outsource payroll for the, for a reason that the processes within this current system, it was a seven-day-a-week job to get payroll out every two weeks, it was not, not, it was meaningless. Um, picture this, that payroll is no different than you would use QuickBooks or Quicken at home, the kind of things, it's designed and it's intuitive, so you no longer need to be the payroll genius to run payroll for an organization of our size. Um, not saying that Mr. Small wants to bring it back, not saying that you would want it back, but it's an opportunity and option, and I can tell you that Mr. Small's staff has seen it both sides, both the payroll and the budget spending, he said, I have emails that say, well, did you order it yet? Well, parts were in front of the board. And, and Myra, who is in charge of it, hey, Myra, just shake your head yes or no if you'd like to put some of these on. So, again, not asking for anything more than just what, you know, what is the, if the county wants us to, to go out and see what's available.
And, and Gary, you talked about the cost being two to three hundred thousand dollars, like, talk about the potential savings that we save.
Huge, huge, like everything else, the ROI, we would come to you with that, I mean, you have to assume savings on the purchasing side. Um, ju- just tracking and having intimate knowledge of, we just spent the better part of three million dollars on HVAC and stuff, right? And obviously, we track that and, and trend what's happening on savings there, but now, if you want to watch the, the gas bill, if you want to watch electric bills, it's dashboreded for you, for the executive level folks to just look at and get their answer. You don't need to say, hey, to a bean counter, can you, and I'll quote Mr. Koby, can you run me a spreadsheet for the last ten years? You just say, show me this here, and it, it is designed for today's.
If anyone would look forward, I'm sure.
We'll do it.
I have other technical questions later, if you'd probably get it.
It, it'll, this isn't, this isn't a fast process, I mean, we'll bet it, I know of probably three vendors that, that are interested, and we would assess it all and bet it all, this is probably after budget by the time we come back. Hopefully, we can have a number for budgets finally concluded, but it'll take a while.
Well, I'll go ahead and ask it now, refresh my memory, what's the name of the program that they go, site you go to for the spending?
WB Checkbook.
WB Checkbook, we want to look at something that would be addable to that when they take our data, though.
They all are, so even our current system is, we do an export and import into that all the time, and, and that is for public reference?
Right.
Right? Um, we've been a member of that now for the better part of a year and a half.
Right.
Um, and this would do the same thing. So there's other things that are involved here. Uh, the county clerk's finance office gives data to the sheriff's tax office and vice versa, so we have to work through all of that, and we do that now. It's no different than, we've been through it over and over and over, and so we aren't talking about passing the load or asking any other constitution to do anything, we'll do it differently, but it'll all work together. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Need a motion to go in exactly such as impending legal matters and county council personnel.
Move.
Second.
Sir.
Sir. So, Alan.